Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Hopefully any comments from the public at this time? Anybody wishing to address the board may do so. I'll propose this section, and you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting, again. Mendicit of previous meetings of May sixteenth and May thirty-first. You have copies on the board?
I'll make a motion to accept the irregular meeting of May sixteenth and May thirty-first.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Hopro, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of vote by you, it's a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bill?
How comes a little worse then?
Now, meeting on thirty-first.
Just had one, yeah, who's on meeting?
Yes, we did, didn't we?
Is that you, Red?
Move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Hopro, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? We got any additions, I said? Thank you. No discussion, all those in favor of vote by you, it's a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
The first item I have is a letter from the nutrition program for the elderly. Dear Mayor Rivers, I am ready to request you to the Civic Center Pavilion and Bandstand on July fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, from ten thirty a.m. to one o'clock p.m. to host a senior picnic. Hopefully the weather will cooperate and we will have a beautiful day. Thank you for your assistance. Mike, I believe, does have this penciled in, but just waiting for approval.
Move that we allow the nutrition program for the elderly to use the Civic Center, the Bandstand on July fifteenth.
Second. Moved by trustee Hopro, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? I think that this is a county-wide picnic.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they used to, it's a nutrition program for the elderly. And, yeah, and years ago when we had the van as a fire department, I used to take twelve nice young ladies down. Eighty-five or plus.
The next item I have, did you add it, everybody, aye?
I have a motion by who?
Me, seconded by Brian.
Moved by Hopro, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of vote by you, it's a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The second item I have is Rosas Point Fire Department. This is a formal request that the two thousand and three Ford Crown Victoria, currently under consideration for surplus by the Rosas Point Police Department, be turned over to the Rosas Point Fire Department. The vehicle will be used for training, conferences, and fire police functions. Very truly yours, Junior Moore.
It's on my agenda, board.
Um, I'll move it to the floor.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Moved by trustee Hopro, seconded by trustee Alturni.
It's gonna be a great night.
Yeah.
Mister Mayor, I think that we have to donate the car to the fire department. They've never refused them anything since I've been mayor of this city, like, at this point. However, we have been under a gun heavily this year for the number of vehicles that we insure and register and whatever, and I have a problem with us taking that under the bunch policies. Because we don't know so many cars this year. If it wasn't for that, I wouldn't have a problem at all.
But I think where the problem really stemmed from was with the amount of, the number of vehicles that the police department had.
Exactly.
So, you know, I think that was the problem, was taking it from the police department. But if the fire department has a need for it, I think that we should honor that request.
Well, I'd say give the fire department what they asked for, they do such a good job and, you know.
I think the insurance on that car was like a couple hundred dollars a year.
Mike Bingo told us between seventy-five and a hundred dollars a year.
How much?
Between seventy-five and a hundred.
That wasn't what we were told.
That's what he told me, Adam.
Yeah, we were told it was four hundred.
No, I know that it was, it was two hundred and some odd dollars.
I'm just saying that was said at this board meeting, I'm just, for informational, I'm just saying that was said at this board meeting.
But the other thing is, now, if you guys understand this, is that that vehicle's taken off the road because it's crippled. It's got some problems.
The only problem I heard that it had is its battery, which we know, and it needs probably a tire and two rims. And Mike Bingo's gotten, Scott Bayshard's got into the sheriff, they had some Crown Vics.
Yeah.
One time they're gonna see if they still had them to get tires and rims off that.
Well, I, you know, I have absolutely no problem with the tire.
I mean, I think the benefits outweigh the insurance expense.
I'm favored, we're giving it to them, but they'll have to take care of their own expenses. I might be able to get you one of those Crown Vic rims, seconded.
Fine.
Just when he said that, you know.
Check into it for it.
Two.
Or two, whatever, you know. So, I mean, talk to me, or just give me the year of the car.
Okay.
Two thousand and thirty.
Two thousand and thirty. I bet you we got, or seconded, got some rims or whatever.
Yeah, no, seconded. Any other discussion? Yes, none, all those in favor of vote by you, it's a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, board.
My beer.
I didn't hear that.
And then, am I ready?
Yeah, you're ready.
The next item I have is, I received by certified mail a notice from Water Dogs, D A W G S L L C. It's ninety to ninety-two Lake Street. It's an application for their liquor license, and that's the Old Times Cafe location. So that's just for informational purposes, and that's all I have for correspondence.
Thank you, Carol. Well, I'll find it. Okay, report to the mayor and the board of trustees. First thing on my agenda is authorized, Jerry Favre, the Bravo Group, for the Auto-Rundbeck House Country Association Meeting in Taconaloga, and Destination Master Plan Guide for Guided Tour Committee Meeting in Plattsburgh. The reason why we're looking for authorization, one, is asked to use their own car for one, and the yellow one she uses is a village car. So we'll have to pay her mileage, so that's one. I think that's the one, Plattsburgh, which is, whatever, yeah.
What is this in relation to?
It's, it's on, she's on this committee for the Village of Rosas Point, it's tourism.
Move it both parts, second.
Both parts?
Moved by trustee Hopro, seconded by trustee Jefferson, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of vote by you, it's a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Resolution, New York DOT for Maintenance Jurisdiction Plan.
Want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Whereas New York State Department of Transportation has requested the Village of Rosas Point create a Maintenance Jurisdiction Plan for Pratt Street, and whereas this plan will label Village and State responsibilities for maintaining Pratt Street, and whereas the state is responsible for maintaining the pavement and drainage as well as plowing the street, and whereas the village is responsible for sidewalks, sewers, water mains, electric, and removing snow from the sidewalks and shoulders. Therefore, be it resolved that this Maintenance Jurisdiction Plan will be implemented to maintain Pratt Street. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Move it.
Moved by trustee Hopro, seconded. Seconded by trustee Baker, is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is the first I've ever seen anything like this.
I think it's because we're gonna tear up and move the sidewalk on Pratt Street. This whole Pratt Street project has been a real bear because they have a new engineer in Wartham, and he has put us through I don't know if I might use the word I want to use. He has put us through a long and heck of a hard time in order to get the DOT permit, which is a part of it. And along with that, our engineer, Mr. Ryan, from Earth Science Engineering, informed us today that the DOT has approved the plans for Pratt Street, we should have them by next week. And with the permit.
Is the schedule gonna be that?
Who knows what the schedule will be?
Oh, no. Couple people ask me, and I go, boy, I'm not really sure if we're gonna be able to do it for sure or not.
Well, actually, we'll probably be two weeks late, because we're gonna start doing them. We're, we're close to schedule.
Okay, so you need a motion on this, I'll make that motion.
No, you already got the motion.
There's a roll call, vote, uh, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Uh, trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee, I'm, thank you.
Aye.
Trustee Hopro.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Okay. Discussion on my government beer. And I'm gonna just move away from the agenda here for a minute. Is to remind people that if they're going to have a wedding on a beer or anything else on a beer, then please call the village and sched- schedule it. Schedule it. It's a liability of, plus, it could be already be scheduled, and we've had this happen in the past. Somebody, there were two weddings, and one, one was scheduled, and the other one they wanted to go on, and thank God they called, so then, they actually had the two weddings, but then the two parties, they moved the times. And it would be embarrassing if somebody wanted to have a wedding or something down there, they didn't schedule it, and there was something going on there. It's not that we are trying to be know-it-all or whatever, it's, it's just to make things work smoothly. And that's the discussion on that. Okay. Discussion on Asset Management Plan, and I think, board, you've got all of this. There's a folder that, from Barton and Jewis, and they made this presentation out of the mayor's conference. And that is for the state of New York now. If you're gonna be doing, applying for any grants, it's gonna require that you have this. But I'm not saying we should jump into this immediately. I think we should get Barton and Jewis up here and make the presentation they made down there. They're willing to do that. And what that is, is like if you applied for a grant for the water department, they wanna see how you're taking care of your pumps, how you're taking care of everything. And you have to record everything. I'd like to be able to go ahead and get them, get them to come up for a presentation on to the board.
Go ahead, yeah.
I thought it quite interesting, and it's, but Lake Placid, by the way, is doing this with the water department. They started with the waters department, so.
It's gonna be the way it's gonna be, I mean, they just hold you to a higher standard.
Yeah.
Yeah. Costs you a little bit more money, but.
What else is new? Okay, I'm gonna surplus, empty downtown aluminum streetlights. That's the ones we took down. We will have to advertise them. And I would say, Carol, by the next meeting, would that be, is that too soon?
No, it's fine.
By the next meeting, we're making the decision.
My advertising, I'm doing an ad in the paper?
Yeah, you have to have, you don't have to.
Oh, you just can't give it to somebody?
Well, we can give it to another municipality, but we can't give it to individuals. And there are some people interested in.
Oh, there is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to give them the business.
Can't do that. The nice people call the New York State Auditorium, frown on that people.
A little comment on those polls is, you know, those little tags that we had put on when we went around and put the, the flags downtown, people actually sponsored each white post, and those tags are, are still on it, but now they're not on the new, on the new posts, and the flags are there.
They've bought the flags.
Is that what they did?
Yeah. Okay.
You gonna make a motion on the surfacing, George?
Yeah, I need a motion, board.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of vote by you, it's a sign of aye. Those opposed, motion carried. I guess, okay, resolution for Patriot flag, would you like to read that, man clerk?
Whereas the Patriot flag honoring our patriots is toured the United States in honor of the fallen on nine eleven oh one, and whereas the Patriot flag was donated to the World Memorial by a group of businessmen from Escondido, California, through the American Legion Post, J.B. Clark Post one forty-nine. It began as an idea at a funeral for World War II veterans in Oceanside, California, and has evolved into a national project of patriotism. And whereas the cross-country tour began in San Diego on September twelfth, tenth, two thousand and eleven, and ends in San Diego on September second, two thousand and eleven. It will be flown in fifty states in fifty weeks. And whereas on nine eleven eleven, the flag will fly at Flight ninety-three Rose Garden in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, the Pentagon in Arlington, Virginia, and the Manhattan Battery Park in New York City, with an official retirement ceremony being performed in Enschedido, California, and then the flag will be placed on display in an appropriate honorable location. And now therefore be it resolved that the village of Rosas Point is proud to be a part of this tour, and we are honored to have a Patriot flag flown in Rosas Point on July first, two thousand and eleven, at the Rosas Point Fire Station.
I'll make a motion to, for the resolution for the Patriot flag to be flown in Rosas Point.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, any discussion? Uh, just, go ahead, John.
Just, I think that we should definitely get a written notification out to the media, newspapers, the radio, the television.
We are working on it, we, we have a, a small committee that is a subcommittee of the Fourth of July, and we are working on making this a, a pretty big event.
The program is beautiful.
Have you seen the program yet?
Yes, I have.
So, this is gonna be quite an honor for the village to, to make this.
We work out the logistics with the flag, with the unit.
Yeah, we have worked with the, the chief officers of the department, as well as the American Legion, as well as the police department, and we have a pretty good plan. It's gonna be flown, I believe, between the fire station and Bruce St. Till's lot. And will be flown, but we'll have our fire truck, the Rosas Point Fire, or ladder truck, as well as Saint Paul's ladder truck, and it'll be hanging. This flag is thirty feet by sixty feet, it's huge flag. So, it should be pretty, quite an honor.
You should send a copy of this, like you said, all over.
We're working on press release.
Jerry Favre will second carry it. Scott says the agenda is all planned out, the program is made. I don't know if it's been out anywhere other than the village office, but it's done.
We're gonna have all kinds of agencies, Port Patrol, Customs, Legions, Fire Department, it's gonna be pretty nice for the village.
It's my understanding that the flag will be flown in five places in New York State, and that's it. You're wrong, it's quite an honor to have that. So, that being said, roll call, vote, the vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Hopro.
Aye.
Trustee Hopro. And the mayor votes aye. Okay. You have in your possession, I believe, a contract on Verizon. And I don't like it, and our attorney don't like it. Because a few months ago, I believe in March, they offered us so much a month, starting in July, and now they've sent a contract saying, well, we wanna amend that, and they're only gonna pay us twenty-five hundred one time for that. I talked to the attorney today, and his recommendation, and my feeling also, that we cancel the contract with Verizon. They have done nothing but neck our chain for the last four, five years.
Makes us look foolish, we can't get this resolved, these guys.
Been talking about this since I've been on the board. We've been talking about this since I've been on the board, when we were here.
I've been always on the board.
But I've been on it several years.
Yeah.
We've gotta actively look for another.
So, if the board votes on this tonight, I will call Kim McDonald in the morning, because she's waiting to hear from me and Tom, and Tom has already expressed his opinion.
So who's Kim McDonald? Who's Kim McDonald?
She's our broker.
Okay.
And tell her to start looking for others.
Yeah.
Mister Mayor, maybe we should give them thirty days to either or.
Well, then the attorney's gonna write the letter.
Yeah.
They're messing around all the time.
They've done nothing but neck our chain.
Everybody in the village, and Pete's asking them, when are you gonna get a cell service, when are you gonna get a cell service? Well, they ain't gonna do nothing but pitch them out the door.
Well, it's like Carol said, dude, I mean, I know it gets down to numbers, there's not a lot of customers here, but like Carol said, how many thousands of people come through the village, and they can't talk in their cell phone? No, it's probably safety, it's just, you know.
That's my report on that.
I'll make a motion to contact the, contact the attorney and cancel this agreement.
I'll second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, is there any discussion, board? There being no discussion, all those in favor of vote by you, it's a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, next thing on my agenda is Cold War exemption. Now, three or four years ago, veterans got Cold War exemption. According to the assessor's office, we never passed or admitted a local law. And how I found out about it is because I got it last year, but they didn't get it on my taxes this year. And they did some checking, and apparently we never did anything about it. But that being said, we need to pass a resolution on in favor of this exemption for veterans.
They had the public hearing and everything, so.
We have to amend the local law for that.
Yeah.
So, I need a motion for that.
Give me forward.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Hopro, there being no discussion, all those in favor of vote by you, it's a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And I got three more things, then I'm gonna shut up.
Oh, so.
Oh.
Can't anymore.
Yeah, I can. All right. Let me issue a brush and stuff on the side of the streets. Talked with superintendent this morning, and he's gonna pick up one more time before the Fourth of July. And those people who got the brush out there are gonna be given a hand-carried notice, this is it, until this fall. We can't continue to do this, 'cause it takes at least three, three people to pick up the brush and check it. We are way behind on our jobs right now. And the weather's getting nice, and we're starting to move forward, and we wanna continue. So, that being said, I wanna remind everybody, there's a leash law, and ask them to be responsible and thoughtful enough to pick up their broken waste. And I wanna thank the people that have done that. There's people that walk in this village, and right on Main Street.
And there's a lot of people that walk on the streets.
And on Main Street, there's three to four piles every morning on the sidewalk. And that's uncalled for, totally uncalled for. All right, so. And we do have, I think, a local law on that, don't we? The next thing is to catch the poor dog. So anyway, I'm just, just, you know, say thanks for the ones that do, 'cause I see a lot of them that have their little guy to take care of it. And don't unhook your dog and let it run. Remind, uh, other things I have to say is signs on poles, we go through this once a year. But last Saturday, I saw a sign on one of our brand-new poles, caked. And what they don't realize, it take them to the aluminum poles or the concrete poles, it leaves a mark on the poles, and it takes, it pulls off the ceiling. So I, I just, there's a lot of people that adhere to this, and I really thank them for it, 'cause it does make a hit of a difference. Take a look at a couple of those aluminum poles, and they're blackened all the way around them, and you can't take it off. So please, don't put your signs on the new or the old poles. I don't care if you nail them to the wooden poles, 'cause they're all coming out anyway. That being said, I'm done. Vote!
I gotta get to work.
No, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, trustee Jefferson. Yes, thank you, Mr. Rivers. Uh, just a couple of quick items on my, well, quick, I don't know how quick it'll be, but. Supplying water, supplying of water to the town of Champlain. We talked about it, we know we need to get more customers, and this is a step that, I don't know how long it's gonna take to be able to sell water to Champlain. I spoke with Mayor Rivers this afternoon about it, and signing a contract for twenty years is, is, that's the only thing that I didn't really like about it. I know that we have to go forward and set a rate that's a wholesale water rate, so that Champlain can take it and add a little profit onto it, and make a little bit of money on it. And I agree with that, and I don't have a problem with that. And I know that we need to have more customers, and we've got a big water tower. We've got a lot of capability to produce water for more customers. So, John, would you wanna just talk about that, did I miss anything?
No, all, all the town would like to do is get, have a, have a contract saying that you were willing to supply to us at a certain rate. And you guys, the village itself would have to set a wholesale water rate for the town of Champlain. And I figured that's something you guys could work on a little bit with us, 'cause we like to apply to rural water for a grant to run some, some pipes up on, on the side of Route eleven out there, up at least as far as two seventy-six. And this is a step, the engineers advise us, first we have to have, be able to buy. We have that guaranteed contract that we can buy at a certain rate to even start this thing going. So if you guys would discuss it, I know we have outside water user rates, but the thing is, we need to get something, some kind of firm contract, so we can say, okay, we have this, now we gotta forward to step two and move on up the thing. I think this would take quite a while anyway, but the first step having been is having you people willing to sell the water to the town. So, when you, you say that, John, when we say that we are willing to sell to the town of Champlain, we have to include a rate at that point? Yes, we do, 'cause it has to be the fall in the rural water perimeters. They have a perimeter from this area to this area, which they feel they would, they would fund the program after the water was gonna be sold at a certain rate. Now, uh. For X number of years, or? Well, I think the lease you could go, it'd be ten years, probably get to five years to get this thing even off the ground.
Supervisor Barco informed me about two weeks ago that he got a call from the engineers, and they wanted a twenty-year contract. I never answered them one way or the other, because that's just an extension of this board. But I don't believe in twenty-year contracts, and all hell can break loose.
Well, to see the water rates the way they were twenty years ago, and give us kind of, I mean, stuff goes up two, three, I mean, we don't raise the water rates all the time.
No.
But they're not the same as they were twenty years ago, and the rates today won't be the same as they're gonna be twenty years from now, so.
So, so if we put in a, a, a set rate, we're gonna be locked into that for the, for the length of the contract? Yeah, but I, I don't think it has to be twenty years, I didn't talk to the engineers about that myself. Uh, I will, but I'd like to have you gentlemen, uh, sit down and have a few discussions. As you know, there's two places to come off, one off at the end of, up on Route eleven there, and of course, we can buy that piece from Dennis, that comes under railroad tracks versus drilling under the thing, either one or the other. But in order to get this ball rolling, you guys have a couple meetings about this. I'll get back to them and see what the least amount of the contract time could be to get things going. But I would just like you to put this on your agenda to have a discussion about it.
Do you win a contract in the village of Champlain?
Hmm?
Do you have a?
Yes, we do.
A, a long-term contract?
No, we do it every. No, we do it every two years.
That's what we should be doing, something like that.
I think two, though.
No, the only thing is, it has to be longer than that for them to give us the money to go up. It'll take a few years to go up there. We could not possibly do it on a couple years, because, you know, they have to have a firm deal.
Five or ten, I can see that.
Well, even, you know, even if, if you phrase it properly, if it costs us X number of dollars, then you're gonna mark it up, say, for example, ten percent over the length of the contract or something.
A little joke aside, John, just a little joke aside.
I know.
We could do what Horizon does and command, you pay us ahead of time.
Well.
Just be.
Yeah.
Realistic, John. Now, how long do you think before we can really go forward with that?
Well, the only thing, the only thing is, we have to show them on paper that we, that the water's available to be bought.
Yeah, I understand that.
When you go from there, and then that's the only reason we, we can start to apply for these grants and how far up the road we wanna go. They're gonna figure, the engineer's gonna figure out how much for the linear footage it's gonna be, uh, you know, what's involved, the whole thing. But we have to have the, the contract, that, so we're able to buy the water from the village first.
So, so the first thing we need to do is sit down and establish a rate?
Well, we get what, with our saying, things, we figure out what we can do here.
And the length of the contract? But there's always, uh, contract language you can throw in there for rate increases.
Yeah.
We'll get Doug involved in this, but Doug worked a lot. Got all the figures. I'll put on the agenda for the next meeting too. In the meantime, we'll talk to Doug and we'll talk to the, the attorney, uh, Tom Renee. And then I'll be able to get back to him and bring it up again next meeting, but we should be able to move pretty quick on it.
Okay.
You, Councilman Cooper?
Yep, I appreciate that, you guys, because, you know, we gotta, we gotta start somewhere. In the event that everything goes here, there's gonna be a lot of water available. Uh, if we're sitting in the tank too long, we're gonna run into those problems that we always run into. So if we just get some kind of a deal, I don't know how long it would take, but it'll, if you just get it started, it might go.
Okay, uh, the second item on my agenda tonight is, I would like the, make a motion to authorize a clerk to publish a legal notice to go up to bid for Schedule Forty PVC for the Pratt Street Underground Electric Project.
And by Trusty Jefferson, second by Trusty Baker. Any discussion? If not, all of the votes by you, son of a aye.
Aye.
And then just.
Opposed, motion carried.
And just one other thing quickly, uh, I was telling George that on the old road where the bridge used to come across, you can see that there's a lot of damage from the under, undermining of, you know, the lake when it was high. And we're still having problems and stuff, so. There's a problem there, and there's obviously other problems in the village. The water's too high and we don't know exactly what the damage is and stuff like that, so.
That, that road is no concern of ours.
I know, but I'm just using that for an example. If that's going down, the bolt launch has probably gone down. Uh, hopefully, I mean, uh, that we don't have a problem with the pier, you know, the new pier. There's a lot of metal in there.
Lost a lot of ground there, Arthur Bean. Got a bell section there.
You know, from, from the pier going north, we've lost ground. The pier is sheet piloted, so it ain't going anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, that ain't, that's it.
Um, but it's just like the sportsman's dock and stuff too. We don't, I mean, there was two feet of water they sent there at one time. So, and of course, the marines too. I mean, John Lot's not even open yet. I mean, we've lost, I mean, I don't know how they're ever gonna recoup the money that we've lost. And that's all I have to report to me.
Thank you, Trusty Jefferson, Trusty Baker.
I have nothing to add.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Trump, Trusty Roberts.
Uh, first thing I'd like to do is read a letter we received from the Assembly of State of New York in Albany. Uh, addressed to Ms. Donna Bullmail. Congratulations on your selection for a new New York State Library Construction Grant Award. These grants are highly competitive, and I'm pleased you have been awarded seventy-three thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars for capital improvements. I look forward to continuing to work with you, and please feel free to contact me at any time. This is from Janet Dupree, member of the Assembly. Um, wanna thank you, uh, Ms. Bullmail for applying for grant and, and obtaining it on behalf of the village to get the roof replaced on the library. Um, I think the next step, actually, do you wanna, um, talk about your grant?
And, uh, the next step, my understanding is, uh, we'll talk to Doc Ferris to get the specs on the library. We have drawings and blueprints, and they surveyed the land. And, uh, it's my understanding, the next step is, um, obtain specs, what's gonna have to be done, and then go out for bid. And I've already received three phone calls asking when it's gonna go out for bid. Um, so there's a lot of issues.
That won't, that won't be enough to do the whole roof, though?
No, uh, we based the rent on the high estimate that we got, so, um, seventy-three thousand eight fifteen is half. Um, and I'm waiting to hear when the USCA federal government grant is gonna open. They have our pre-application for that one, so. Um, and this, this grant, this construction grant, we have three years to complete it. And the process for the money coming to the village is, your, the first installment that we receive is forty percent of the grant. The second installment is fifty percent, and then we get the final ten percent upon the completion of the final report. And the timeframe has been skewed because the budget didn't pass in time. So it's been skewed by, um, almost six months. So we haven't received the application when the first installment is gonna happen. But we have a hundred and eighty days to start the process, and by starting the process, obtaining the specs and going out for bids.
Anything we could do to, on the village part, to, you know, make it things quicker? And obviously, Mike Pedro and Doc Ferris, and Mike Pedro's already looked at it.
Right, and we don't need a permit. And, uh, so that's one thing that we don't have to have. Uh, Ryan Davies, um, through Zebra Tech has already contacted me. He emailed, um, the end of last week. And he's been notified that we received the grant, wanted to know the update, and I told him as soon as we had board approval to, um, go forward for the specs and for the bidding, that I would let him know, and he's available. I've worked with him in the past. He's very good.
Is there any in-kind services or anything, or?
As far as right now, um, no. No, we won't know until, um, we receive the bid and exactly how much damage is done to the roof. Uh, from what we obtained from, um, one contractor, they, he was talking total deck replacement. Um, and that's something that I was talking with Ryan Davies about, and he has some ideas on how that's gonna work. So I think it'll be meeting with the engineers to exactly determine what's gonna have to be done. And with him actually going on top of the roof to see what'll have to be done.
So I don't know if it's too, uh, too early to, uh, authorize to go to bid. And that's one way that we can expedite the process.
We can.
Once the specs are written, then we can just.
Then we can go out for bid.
Yeah, can go to bid.
Sounds to me like seventy-eight thousand dollars is all you're gonna pay.
Angry in the sky surface.
Yeah, then you take forty percent for the engineer fees and, you know, already off the top.
Most of the engineering work's done.
Most of it's done. It's just the, all the, the blueprints that was done through the grant process. So it's just sitting down to do the specs. And he already has all the blueprints. He has everything done.
That's good. A lot of damage here in the water.
A lot of damage. And I have a listing from the contractor, um, and pictures that you've seen, um, of the damage. And he made a listing of what he would do. That was part of his estimate. So I believe we can just use that with the engineer and basically go from there for the specs.
You gonna put the original stuff back on it?
I would like to. I'm not a roofer. If the slate could be saved, why not? That's saving us money.
Yeah.
Um, and then with the old slate, I don't know what the village procedure is as far as that old slate, if it's village property, uh, that can be sold. Um, and I'm not sure how that works as far as what the village, um, procedure is on that.
So, you don't have to be slate, though? We don't know that, do we?
It's, um, through historic preservation, slate or slate-like. And the estimates that we received, they were comparable in price. Slate lasts a lot longer. So you're gonna get more for your money with the slate.
I remember we had the discussion six months ago.
Yeah.
You want, uh, you want a hundred-year roof, or do you want a twenty-year?
This roof is a hundred and eleven years old, and to my knowledge, it's been patched, you know, two or three times. And the last time was almost two years ago. We have a lot of, um, issues on the west side of the building. And the last rain, with all the rain that we received, it's, it's gotten bad, and it's come down to one of the vents on the bookshelves now on the main floor.
Plus you got milk, and you gotta, once you have water, it's like after a house leak, you know? Longer leaks, more damage.
To me, and that's something that the contractors and the engineers are gonna have to discuss, that west side, to me, should be replaced first. That's the worst side. Um, we don't see any damage on the east side, um, and very little on the other two sides, but that west side is the worst side.
So I'd like to move that we authorize, uh, to go forward with the, uh, with finalization of the specs, authorize to go to bid.
Second. Vote by Trusty Roberts, second by Trusty Hockrow. Any discussion? If not, all of the votes by you, son of a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Again, uh, thank you, Donna.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, man, you're to be commended for that all the work that you put into it.
Thank you. It's not done.
Not worth you.
Uh, the other, the second thing that I'd like to just, uh, state is that the, uh, the stage entertainment for the summer months is in place, and, uh, you should find, you should see flyers throughout the village and, um, ads in the paper. But the first presentation is actually this Wednesday night at the stage. I believe it's at six-thirty, and it's gonna be northeastern jazz band and, uh, Coro will be there, I believe. So if you get a chance, come on down. Uh, the other thing that I'd like to report is the Fourth of July parade. Um, we have to, unfortunately, we have to change the parade route this year. Um, we no longer have access to Deligar for the, uh, lining up to the parade. So we're actually moving the parade lineup up to, uh, Academy Street and, uh, Pfizer Parking Lot. We've been given permission to use Pfizer Parking Lot and the school parking lot as, as far as that goes, to start the parade and end the parade there. So, we're not sure, and we're, we're actually talking about, uh, going up Chapman Street versus State Street. We're still working on the logistics there. As you know, we had requested some money in the budget to, uh, uh, put towards the Fourth of July parade for the, uh, police department. And we scratched it in order to save, uh, the tax increases. So, uh, we're working on the parade logistics, but I, I do know that the parade will start at, uh, Academy Street versus, um, Montgomery Street, so.
It's gonna be hard to get the word out, when you're gonna send it.
Yeah, that's gonna be, uh, my meeting with Mike Bingo on Monday to talk about Chapman Street versus State Street. Hopefully, we can go ahead and go right down to State Street, but we're, we're concerned about the number of personnel. We're, we're, we're putting in a plea to the, uh, police departments for their fire police to help us out with, uh, police, uh, traffic control. So that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Roberts. Trusty Hockrow.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Actually, I have two things, but the first one, I'm gonna kick back to you, Brian, after I mention that. Uh, over the weekend, there was an article in the paper about scrap iron of bringing a lot more red than lately, and we got that old water tank.
I know, I saw that.
There's a way we can do something about it. I'll, I'll leave it in the insurance.
Well, it's two hundred dollars a ton of scrap metal now. So it's worth a lot more, but it's very labor-intensive to tear it down.
Yeah.
I remember we had somebody who was gonna tear it down and they were gonna just take it. What happened to that?
But it was. Well, the problem being with that is that the tank has lant paint.
Oh, that's what it was, yeah.
And, uh, the process was gonna be, was the guy would have taken it down, even dropped it. And they were trying to get, well, Wyatt's permission to drop it on our property, and there's plenty of room to do it. But the minute they found out that was lant paint, Wyatt said no. Now, maybe we could view a visor, I don't know. But to take it down, you know, the guy come in to take it down, he's gonna charge it. Even though the steel is scrap, because, like you said, the higher cranes, um, that kinda work is very expensive.
Yeah, it is, but, you know, maybe at the cost of the price of the steel or the metal now, it might be more cost-effective for some reason. Anyway, I think we had a look at it. Um, the other thing, uh, Mr. Ray, I was reminded, and I think we've been a mess. Uh, you know, every time we have something heavy duty going on, we thank someone. You know, Public Works or whoever, whoever, whoever. What we don't do, and as personnel chair, I'm probably the person that should be at their hands slap. We don't thank the people that aren't out there in the front looking. We don't thank the guys that are working at the garage, the folks in the office, or we don't thank them for the job they do. Maybe we just expect excellence and we get it, so we don't have to thank it, I don't know. But, uh, but anyway, I would like to thank all of the employees that contribute so much, and we just couldn't survive without them.
That's for sure.
That's all, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Trusty Hockrow. One thing I think we need to look on, look at, and look on, and we're gonna look onto it for a while. I contacted Altona. And, uh, we're on the list to get the president's back intersection at the lake. But it might be late. Might be at the end of July. But we really, before the fourth, clean up lumber or whatever, wood along the, the, there's trees floating right next to the, to the, I think. We need, really need to take a look at that. My wife suggested that Mr. Hockrow, chair committee, can get these people, uh, get, like we did when we cleaned up the beach. And, uh, get up a cleanup day. Get the village trucks out and whatever we need. Clean up the wood, tool, right up this, this.
Well, I think your wife made a very wise, uh, I think, but she missed half of it.
She didn't mean.
I think the mayor should be the co-chair.
She said, she said to me, who's the beautif- beautification chair?
It's always the ugliest guy on the, on the board, isn't it?
Well, I don't, yeah, uh, if I was sitting down talking about that, I'd figure it out tomorrow. But it's gotta happen, you know, we're, we're July, June sixth already.
Not tomorrow.
No, no.
We can talk about it on Wednesday. Well, we're going up to, because I gotta, my wife is taking me to Birmingham tomorrow shopping.
All the wood, Ryan said if we brought the trucks down, threw all the wood right into the village's trucks, then we'll relocate it and decide later. Like, there's a lot of wood that's gotta come out of the lake, and that's our biggest asset for the village, so. You know, if everybody could just do a little bit to get.
But the, uh, the problem with, with doing is, we have to have the guys working on the weekend, because most people are working during the week.
Yeah.
You know, unless they could just get it up near, where we could just toss it out to the trucks, so. And let's talk about it once again.
All right. That said, Carol, do you have any?
Aye.
Or Sam?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Open a meeting to the public. Anybody wishing to address the board may do so. If nobody wishes, then I need a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
She has moved by executive, and seconded, and seconded, chairman, take your joy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
You have a big game tonight, or Sam?
No, I don't have it here.
What's that, Sam?
Well, are you in charge of Public Works?
Are you in Spark? It's in, oh, it's in Boston, that's right.
I was hoping Ryan was gonna be here. Mike Bingo asked me to change, ask Ryan. I have a feeling whoever lost it, we didn't.
Oh, you do?
We're gonna come back, just like staying serious, win the next three games, drop game six.
Good drinking before you came to meeting. Lot's going on here.